We're gonna start this off right, huh? It's just after 6:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. Will the Deputy City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Hughesman.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank. Mayor Pro Tim Madera. Mayor Allen, or Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Wardiola. Councilmember Hurst.
Present.
Councilmember Grimes.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to excuse those members that are not present? I have a problem up here.
Says it's inactive.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the four councilmembers that are not present currently. Councilwoman Grimes?
A second.
Have a motion and a second to excuse those members not present. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We will excuse those four members that are not present. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to City Manager McRum.
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman. Welcome, everyone. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. I'm gonna cover this first slide and then turn the balance of the presentation over to Dominic Martinelli. One initial request, if you've looked through the presentation, there's a lot of slides, a lot of information. I think it'll work best if we can present the information and then do questions after the presentation. Hopefully, we'll answer questions. The goal is to spend less than an hour covering the information. Again, there's a lot there. We're gonna cover it in a sort of a high-level fashion and then reserve the rest of the meeting to answer any questions that you have. The origination of the meeting is, for those who've been, for folks who've been watching, city government, oil and gas has been a significant issue in our community for several years now. With incoming councilmembers, it was our desire to update newer councilmembers with all of this information and kind of bring them up to speed with where we are on managing oil and gas in our community. It was Mayor Hughesman that suggested an ideal way to do that would be to do it at a city council meeting. Given the time of year, the best option was to schedule a special meeting for this purpose. It is intended to just be an overview of key issues for the city council. There's no action plan tonight. There's no public comment planned tonight. It's really intended as an overview for the current city council and an opportunity for councilmembers to ask questions. There is a lot of information. We've broken it down in a logical way to help us move through the information in a way that makes sense. Although there are significant policy issues covered in all of the information, again, the goal tonight is not to have policy discussions necessarily, but to provide a lot of information, answer questions, to create a good, solid foundation for the city council to move forward and, and, and address oil and gas policy issues as they come to the council in the coming months. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Martinelli to walk through the slides.
Thank you, Mr. McRum, and thank you to members of the city council. Again, my name is Dominic Martinelli, and I am the city's liaison to the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, so I'm what's known as the local government designee. We're gonna be going through this presentation tonight, and it's not going to be just me giving this presentation. There are some other folks in the city that also work on oil and gas issues. To my left, we have Matt Hader, who's our Deputy City Attorney. He advises us on some of the legal aspects that occur regarding oil and gas. And then we also have an outside special counsel, Matt Sura, who is going to be doing part of this presentation as well and has advised us on oil and gas in the past. So Brian was right in saying that there, this, there is a lot of information embedded within this topic, and there's a lot to digest, so the portion, the focus of the presentation tonight will be getting everyone up to speed on what has been, been done essentially since 2018, what a lot of the work has been, what's existing, and where we anticipate going in 2020. Matt Sura is gonna give the introduction presentation on the basics of oil and gas development, so just general foundation, what is oil and gas, what type of development activity are we seeing? And then I'm going to do an overview of the state regulation process, the current activity that we're seeing in the city, the timeline of events that have occurred since 2018. And then Mr. Matt Hader is going to conduct an overview of the regional operator agreement. And then I will go back to wrapping up kind of the land development code process in terms of the updates and what's currently in place, and then what we should expect in 2020. If there's additional legal questions that arise during the presentation, there would be an opportunity for members of council to call an executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice. With that being said, I am going to pass it off to Matt Sura.
Thank you. My name is Matt Sura. I'm a special legal counsel on oil and gas issues for the city of Commerce City. And I'm just gonna give you a really brief overview of oil and gas, just to get ourselves a little oriented. Oil and natural gas is obviously a, not a renewable resource, comes from the ground. Colorado is, is one of the top 10 producing states in both oil and natural gas. It's created by the deposition of the burial of organic matter that is compressed over the millennial and ultimately becomes oil and gas. What they have been looking for here is specifically shale formations on the Front Range in under Commerce City, both the Niobrara and the Codell formations, which are both shale formations that produce both oil and gas. So there are different types of wells. You can have vertical wells, which are the types of wells that you see historically in Colorado. If you're going out in, in Weld County, even here within the, the city limits, there are vertical wells. Right now, at this point in their development, most of them are at least a dozen years old or older, and so they have pumpjacks that are helping them bring that oil to the surface. There's directional drilling, which is what it sounds, that they're going directionally from one location, and then they go vertically once they hit the geology that they're targeting. And then there's horizontal drilling, which is going down probably directionally, but then when they hit the formation that they want to produce, they try to stay in that formation from one to two, to as many as three miles, to increase the amount of production that they get from that formation. And the well types, you can see on, on this map, there, there are these pictures, there are benefits and drawbacks to each type. Vertical well pads are much smaller, there's less production. And if you are in a formation like a tight sands formation or a shale formation, you're going to have a lot of them, a lot of wells to be able to produce that, that formation. Or then there's the horizontal well pad, which is one well pad rather than several, but it, there's also a lot of more going on in those well pads generally. And right now, most of the wells on the Front Range are multiple well pads. There can be as many as eight to, yeah, upwards of 40 on a well pad. And most of the, the production that is happening in the Greater Wattenberg Field, where we are, is from these horizontally drilled, hydraulically fractured multi-well pads. This is the Denver-Julesburg Basin, part of the Denver-Julesburg Basin is the Wattenberg Field, Greater Wattenberg Field is, is what it's called. And this is where most of the oil and gas development is occurring in the state of Colorado, because we have what is still a viable resource, oil. Right now, natural gas is at such depressed prices that it, there's not a lot of companies that are going out specifically for natural gas. However, in the Greater Wattenberg Field, you're getting both oil and gas, but they consider it more of an oil play. Getting a little bit of a cross-section of the DJ basin, again, just to give you a sense, Niobrara and the Codell are typically around 6,000 to as far as 8,000 feet below the surface. This is from the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, and it's an interesting map, if you ever want to spend a few minutes just to orient yourself. It's also a great resource. Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is the state agency that regulates the oil and gas industry, and they've got a map that you can call up any part of Colorado on and, you know, toggle it to, I'll show you these different coverages. And what we've, we're showing here are the horizontal wellbores from the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission map. This happens to be Commerce City area. And what you're looking at, every one of those lines is a horizontal wellbore, as I mentioned, that is going one to two to even three miles out, and that's why they're lines like that. If they are a purple color, that means that they have been drilled. If they are in green, that means that they have been permitted by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission but have not yet been drilled. And if they're light blue, it means that they're pending before the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. And as you can see here, the majority of those doesn't really point, but that is where we are in Commerce City, and most of those wells have been, they're, they're still pending before the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. Again, this is just a general cross-section to give you a sense of the types of protections for water quality. There's conductor pipe, which is big pipe, and they get surface casing, and then production casing. And in between, between each one of those, they fully cement it from top to bottom, except for the production casing, but they will make sure that they put adequate cement to keep any oil and gas from entering any aquifer, any potable water supply that is 3,000 feet or above. Life cycle of a well, and this is just general terms that might be helpful in the future, we've got pre-development or pre-production phase, and that is, can be everything from, from leasing to the operator registration, seismic exploration, the rest. Then you get into the development phase, and, and the first part of that is drilling and hydraulic fracturing, or what they call completion operations, which would also include the flowback of those wells, and production phase, which can last for decades. And then the well ultimately, when it becomes uneconomic to continue to run, they will have to plug in and abandon it. And this is, comes out of the regional operator agreement that Commerce City signed with extraction oil and gas, and it gives you a sense of how long each one of these life cycles is. The first one being the construction phase, when they're actually just putting the well pad in place, they're looking at four months. The drilling phase is also another four months, and then for this first Pelican pad with 28 wells, they're looking at a completion phase of up to nine months. Again, that completion looks at hydraulic fracturing, coil tubing, and then the, the flowback. Ultimately, it goes into production phase, and that production phase can last 25 to 30 years. We're not quite sure how long that production phase will last, because frankly, we haven't, this type of oil and gas development hasn't been around that long in the state of Colorado. The drilling rigs, this is a traditional drilling rig that you, that you'll see out there. Sound walls are used to mitigate both A scale and C scale frequencies. The A scale is what you're hearing my voice at. C scale is more of the guy that pulls up to you at a stop sign, and, and you feel it, feel the, the sound in your, your chest, that there's that pressure. Those are the low, low frequency C scale that is very difficult to control, frankly. These sound walls are generally 30 feet in height, and they're only in place during drilling and completion. They're also helpful not only for noise mitigation, but also for light mitigation. And then they get into the production phase. This is, you know, that, that phase in, in the oil and gas production, you know, when you're, you're hearing the noise, when you're seeing the, the drilling rig, that seems like it's, it's, you know, a difficult time, and it certainly is, can, can be for nearby neighbors, but long-term, it's the production phase that you need to consider, because this is what the city or any local government is going to be living with for the next 30, what, 25 to 30 years likely. And on the far upper left-hand corner, that is a location outside of Berthoud, and that is not piped, obviously. They've got a huge tank battery, and it looks like there are two oil tanks for every one wellhead, and it also has the separation equipment, the emission control devices and whatnot. The, the other one on the top is also heavy tank battery, and the one in the bottom is piped facility, it doesn't have those tank, that tank battery. And just to summarize, obviously, there's, there's a lot here, but it's highly industrialized activity and highly regulated activity. And primarily, it's regulated by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, which I mentioned earlier, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and some of the different agencies within that division, specifically the Air Quality Control Commission, and also local governments, particularly with Senate Bill 181, which we're gonna get into soon.
All right, and then I'll be talking about the state regulation process. So the activities of drilling in the state of Colorado are regulated by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. This is a division of the Department of Natural Resources, and it's the state agency that's tasked with the review and permitting of oil and gas operations in Colorado. Since Senate Bill 181, we'll get much more into depth in this and the remainder of the presentation, but they are undergoing significant rulemakings in 2020, and the majority, the overall framework for how oil and gas is regulated in the state of Colorado is going to be changing to some extent. Currently, the common COGCC applications that the city receives notice of are spacing applications and Form 2s and Form 2As. So the COGCC's authorities, it regulates, among other things, the drilling, producing, and plugging of wells, operations for production of oil and gas regulatory agencies, and well spacings. The state interests, so a protection, the protection of public health, safety, welfare, and the environment, the prevention and mitigation of adverse environmental impacts. And as part of the rulemaking, the significant rulemaking that will be undergoing in 2020, they've been tasked with redefining the mission of the COGCC. Senate Bill 181, no, essentially stated that it's no longer to require to foster oil and gas development, but the primary focus is to take the balances in the, the interest of oil and gas companies and balance it with the protection of public health, safety, welfare, and the environment. How that is defined is going to be much more clearly defined in that rulemaking process. So getting into the application types, the spacing application, you can see the purple boxes that are up on the map. Those are applications to essentially utilize the mineral resources that exist underground in the surface. So this is a specific type of application that typically comes before the other types of applications in terms of where are the wells located on the surface, and what are the specific technical aspects of the wellbores? So it depicts the proposed drilling windows for the subsurface activity. Generally, there are no more than three, three of the boxes, which are generally a square mile. It does not identify the actual surface use location within that application. Sometimes another operator may come in and operate a well within that window. There's often trades that occur in the industry, and a wellsite may not actually be even within that spacing application. A lot of times, the actual surface use location is outside of the area of the drilling and spacing unit, and they target resources from different areas. That being said, the Form 2 is the actual permit for the underground wells. One thing to note is that even with Senate Bill 181, local governments generally don't have the ability to regulate downhole activities. That type of specific geological review is conducted at the state level, and most local governments don't have staff on, on hand to review that type of technical application. So it primarily concerns downhole geological issues, and it does not give permission to commence production activities. The last application that we'll talk about, which is the Form 2A, must be approved beforehand. So the Form 2A is the actual location. So you have the surface use location of where, where are the surface impacts, what are, what is the landscaping look like, what are the sound mitigations, a number of aesthetic requirements, coloring for tanks and truck routes and access. So this is, this is essentially the planning exercise of this review, and what local governments are most interested in is how do we protect the impacts from residences in our review of that type of permit? So this typically be, this is where the majority of the effort is focused, and as we get into the details of the regional operator agreement, the majority of the regulations in that document are aimed towards controlling the surface impacts that occur from oil and gas development. That being said, the state is undergoing this rulemaking process. I did include what was released on November 1st, which was the COGCC white paper, which details where the state is anticipating going with its rulemaking in 2020, and they are exploring the effectiveness of these types of applications. And their current recommendation, and this may change through the ruling process, is some of these applications might go away and be consolidated into one application. They're, they're exploring a number of things, so the applications that we talk about are how they exist today. But as, as those rulemakings occur and as changes happen, will, our, our staff will update council on what's occurring and how that impacts our process. So again, Senate Bill 181 is, is the precursor and was the significant state omnibus bill that changed the majority of the regulations as they were related to oil and gas. So it gave local government the clear authority to regulate the surface impacts of oil and gas development in a reasonable manner. And general overview of the, of the bill, the bill did a lot of things, but this is very, very high-level overview of what it accomplished, so it expressly modified state preemption. So local governments were most often prohibited from zoning oil and gas facilities through normal land use regulations and tools. There are a number of restrictions on siting and that type of thing. Expressly authorized local regulation of wellpad locations. As I mentioned, it's reforming the COGCC mission, and expressly authorized local governments to impose fees, and required operators to obtain a local permit prior to receiving a state permit, and additionally revised force pooling requirements. Another aspect of this as well is the COGCC's director objective criteria. After the passing of Senate Bill 181, understanding that the, the requirements of this bill were slightly different from how the state was currently permitting oil and gas facilities. So in May 2019, the, the director essentially put in a stopgap measure to say, as part of this, we're going to add additional scrutiny in our review of oil and gas permits at the state level based on a number of criteria that may have additional impacts to residential uses. And as you can see, that includes sites that are within 2,000 feet of a building unit, sites that are in a municipality, sites that are 1,500 feet from municipal boundary, sites within 2,000 feet of a school property site, and a number of other features. So at the state level, there's additional analysis being conducted on the types of permits that meet these criteria. So how this relates to current activity in the city, we're gonna give a general overview of what activity is being expected of the city. There are There are currently two operators that are looking to develop in the city, proposing a total of 182 wells at eight potential locations. Extraction Oil and Gas is by far going to have the most activity in the city with a maximum of 158 wells at a maximum of seven locations. Petrooperating is the other operator who has one location with a proposed 24-well site. No permits either at the state or the city level have been issued or a final decision rendered for any facilities in Commerce City other than spacing unit applications. So no Form 2s or Form 2As have been approved. Extraction has submitted eight applications, but we'll get into this when we discuss the map in a little bit more detail. But per the regional operator agreement, only seven of those may be approved. Petrooperating has submitted no applications and has not signed a regional operator agreement or an extraction agreement at this time. And then all state Form 2A applications are currently on hold at the state. So this map shows the overall proposed city activity in terms of surface locations. You can see the name of the pad, so there, all of these pads have a specific kind of code name. And then underneath, you'll see the name of the operator and the total number of wells that are planned to be at each site. So you can see in the Anteater, in the Harlow, in the upper left-hand corner, one of those sites will eventually be approved, but not both. Both applications have been submitted, but a permit will not be issued for both sites. And then to give context of talking about where are the underground wells going to go, where the spacing unit applications, this is generally as it exists today, how the underground lateral wells would play into the proposed surface use locations. Extraction Oil and Gas is planning to revise a number of these spacing applications and should be filing sometime in the beginning of this year to rework the configuration based on this way out. And then in terms of city permit applications, this shows the applications that have been submitted and deemed complete. Anteater is the final permit that Extraction has. It has not yet been deemed complete, but once it is, this map, this map will be updated and posted on the city website. Antelope has not been submitted by the other operator. And to provide some additional context, this shows the proximity of the planned facilities in Commerce City and their proximity to residential units. So the red dash line around all of these well sites shows a 2,000-foot buffer. And any of the sites that are colored red are within 2,000 feet of proximity to a home. And then just the general timeline of events, we've gotten to the point that we're at. In 2009 was the first time that the city had any municipal regulations regarding oil and gas. It was regulated in the city for the first time via the Land Development Code. It was allowed with a use-by permit. In 2012, there were major updates that occurred to the Land Development Code, which created the current framework that we have, which requires, it's an administrative approval of an oil and gas permit with the execution of what's called an extraction agreement. It's not in relation to Extraction Oil and Gas, the company, that ended up being kind of a coincidence. But a private agreement between the city and an operator is needed, essentially at the time that these regulations were in place, were due to the preemption in the regulatory framework, requiring private negotiation to occur to gain protections. In October 2017, the city was approached for the first time by ward patrolling about potential facilities in the city. Those plans never materialized. And in late 2017, early 2018, a number of residents in the cities were mailed notifications about drilling and spacing units. And then in March 2018, there were discussions that began with Extraction Oil and Gas, and then this is where the city was first approached about the planned development. In May 2018, we received feedback from council on the approach to take with the operators, which at the time was to direct staff to proceed forward in negotiating maximum protections through a regional operator agreement. In September, that approach was reaffirmed. In November, council authorized Ordinance 2183, which was a minor set of amendments that established guidelines for the regional operator agreement. It established the required 21-day public comment period that was prior to execution, and it authorized the community development director to approve any regional operator agreement. In December 2018, there was a community-wide neighborhood meeting that was held on the best management practices document. During negotiations at that time, the priority and the majority of the discussion was regarding the best management practices, and that was ruled out to the public. Feedback was received on some of the protections that were under consideration. In February, March, there were executive sessions with council updating them on the negotiation process. In April 8, 2019, there was a study session with council on potential code impacts of Senate Bill 181 as the rulemakings were under, were occurring and staff was unaware of what was going on. And then on April 16th, the senator signed Senate Bill, or Governor Polis signed Senate Bill 181. And then in April, between April 24th and June 26, 2019, the city's focus group conducted five meetings. This focus group was appointed by council. There were a total of nine members that were on this group. It was convened between April 24th and June 26th, and then was disbanded afterwards. We have had subsequent meetings with the focus group in additional capacities. We did have a meeting with them on the regional operator agreement and got feedback on that. The resolution that authorized the focus group was that the direction to provide staff with direction on the LDC updates. In June, there was an oil and gas transportation impact fee that was adopted, or it was, there was an open house and stakeholder meetings that occurred on that process. We'll get into a little more depth on what that was. Between July 8th and July 29th, there was a 21-day public comment period on the regional operator agreement where public comment was received. We received about 400 comments from the public. And then around that same time, staff was working on beginning the oil and gas LDC amendment process in response to Senate Bill 181. A lot of this information was transferred over from the regional operator agreement in terms of the protections that were being considered. And then on August 5th, the oil and gas impact fee was adopted. And this impact fee assesses on a per-well basis the additional fees meant to compensate the city for some of the negative externalities and impacts that increased truck traffic from oil and gas facilities has on public roads and infrastructure. The funds can be used for that specific purpose only. In September of 2019, the first local government adopted new regulations since Senate Bill 181. And this is a rather impactful jurisdiction, Adams County, since it surrounds Commerce City on all sides, and which did inform the Land Development Code drafting process. On September 18th, the regional operator agreement was signed and executed. And then during September and October, there was two study sessions held with council on the LDC amendments. In September, there were stakeholder meetings that were held with a number of regulatory groups, industry groups, and specifically with Adams County on the LDC amendments. In October, there were two general public meetings that were held on the LDC amendments and the general concepts that were being explored. And then between October and November, the city received seven oil and gas permit applications, all from Extraction. And then towards the end of October, Planning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of Ordinance 2235, which was the overall, overhaul Land Development Code update. And then on November 4th, council continued indefinitely the oil and gas LDC amendments. And then in December, the city received one additional oil and gas permit application, which is the Anteater site. And that being said, I'm going to pass it over to Matt Hader to discuss the ROA in more detail.
Good evening. So over the last year and a half or so, I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Martinelli and our former community development director, Chris Kramer, and some other staff members, and sitting across the table from Extraction to work out what eventually became this regional operator agreement. And that's a process that included code amendments to allow for the regional operator agreement. What we ultimately ended up with after that process was the ROA itself, which has basically 16 articles and is only a 26-page document. But it also contains seven exhibits, which comprise an additional 47 pages that include a list of well sites, as well as a map. Now, those are proposed well sites. Nothing in the ROA actually approved those locations. It was basically making sure that we all knew what was being contemplated by the agreement. Exhibit B in the ROA is the best management practices, and that probably comprises some of the bulk of the exhibit, certainly. There are exhibit for their insurance requirements, exhibit identifying the plugged and abandoned wells, proposed conditions of approval for state permits. Those would be added for, so to allow for enforcement of those conditions at the state level. Draft schedule of operations for when the wells would be drilled, when rigs would come in, and what would be happening in which location when. And then emergency response, equipment, training, and purchases was also addressed through the ROA process. As I indicated, the BMPs are probably the most significant aspect of the ROA. Those details, specific protections that apply to all the sites of the agreement. They address things like air quality, water quality, safety, visual mitigation, noise mitigation, emergency response considerations. And some of those items were things that our authority to regulate was expanded through 181. So we were able to incorporate some of that through negotiating BMPs within the ROA. As indicated, this is a process that took about a year and a half. And at the conclusion of that, when we had the 21-day comment period, we received about 400 comments that we reviewed and tried to figure out how and whether to incorporate those into the agreement in some form. And we were able to make modifications to the document based in response to those comments. So the BMP document itself, which is Exhibit B to the ROA, and this is available, continues to be available, was posted on the city webpage, the oil and gas webpage. Hopefully, you all have had access to that. I know our previous council members have all read that thoroughly time and time again. But anyway, it basically lists 95 different and specific practices that are required. The initial version that was published that went out for public comment, you know, was a result of that intense negotiation period. At the time, the BMPs were derived basically from code regulations, from what other cities and counties were doing, from state regs, but also from previous agreements that operators have signed with other municipalities and other cities. But also things that are some best industry practices, including things that in this case, Extraction Oil and Gas as a company, things that they did that were not required by state law. But they actually were willing to put those on paper and make that part of the agreement because it's what they do and what they felt was, you know, continue to feel is best in terms of safety and how it aligns with doing the work that they do and the areas that they do. So the general BMP categories is kind of broken down into air quality, water quality protection, the use of pipelines, emergency response plans, inspections, the transportation and circulation plans, noise mitigation, community outreach, reclamation, risk management, safety, and visual mitigation. All things are specifically addressed in detail within the BMP document. In the end, what we were trying to achieve is greater protections than what the COGCC regulations at the time of the adoption of the ROA allowed. And I would also say that even at this time, while the COGCC is going through a rulemaking process, what was achieved through that ROA still exceeds what's in the COGCC regulations. And there are a large number of those things that address public health, safety, environment, public welfare, things that we specifically now have express authority, well-articulated authority from state legis, from the state law now, from SB 19-181 to regulate in those areas. The ROA establishes application requirements, as well as enforcement provisions for the terms within the ROA and the BMPs. It establishes emergency response and equipment and purchasing, training equipment upwards of about $600,000 that was able to be committed to our fire protection districts. Contains insurance requirements that go above and beyond what was already in the Land Development Code. Of course, the requirements of the Land Development Code still apply. The BMPs in our area just supplement that. So as part of the regional operator agreement, pipelines are required. It's one of the best management practices. It appears in Exhibit B in Section 11 of that document. I think it's on page 20 of the BMPs. But it, so, and of course, a pipeline requires a conditional use permit, and the CUP approval process does require city council approval. So this applies to all the sites proposed by Extraction Oil and Gas, but it does not apply to facilities proposed by other operators in the city. This is just a contract between the city and Extraction Oil and Gas. Somebody else can come in, and right now, based on our LDC, they would not be required to have a pipeline. The ROA contains many provisions that local governments are now authorized to regulate through 181. But I want you to also keep in mind that the ROA does not waive or exempt the operator from any applicable law, regulation, or standard. We do not enter contracts that waive our law and regulations. It's not proper, and we can't do that. The other thing to note is that the ROA does not establish vested rights. As many operators have previously been able to receive in other jurisdictions, that's not something that occurred here through these negotiations. In fact, when the LDC was amended to allow the ROA, it specifically stated that vested rights cannot be created through the execution of an ROA. A number of terms were identified in the ROA to make sure that everyone knew exactly what was being discussed and what was being to be required. It's not intended to be an on-come see overview, but you know, the definitions there do include the provisions of the contract to make sure that we have clarity as to what everything means. Kind of general highlight of some of the other key clauses or sections. Article 2 of the ROA does allow that the term, that the argument, that the agreement can be terminated by either party within, with six months' notice, and that's within that initial first four-year term. Article 3 identifies as the applicable code that's going to apply to the oil and gas permits that are submitted by Extraction. And basically, it says that the code that's applicable to those permits are those in a place when the permit is deemed complete. I think right in that article up on the screen, it says is submitted, but the language is actually deemed complete. Article 5 is the requirement for individual oil and gas permits and submittal materials. That's basically the permit requirements, you know, description of all the required plans. And that's a pretty extensive section within the ROA. Article 6, one of the key things there, and then was that if a, if you're less than a quarter mile from residential, then drilling and hydraulic fracturing cannot occur at the same time on one well site. So this is one of those things to make sure that we are maximizing safety and minimizing some of the nuisance-type problems that are associated with well pad sites. Article 6 also includes, the ROA does not approve well sites itself. Those, and we have still have the administrative review process for approval. And of course, council denial of a rezoning or CUP, because the CUP relates to the pipeline or the zoning is something that we have that would allow oil and gas. The denial of one of those by city council could effectively terminate the agreement, not only because it moots that site or doesn't allow that site to move forward, but it basically means that a pipeline isn't feasible anymore, and it basically terminates the agreement for all the wells that have not been drilled. Article 7 basically is the incorporation of the BMPs into the overall regional operator agreement. Article 8, the basic says the operator isn't going to protest our future code changes, and the BMPs apply even if the COGCC does not take those BMPs and make them conditions of approval to state permits. Basically, you know, it acknowledges that those are conditions that are going to apply no matter what the COGCC does. Article 9, basically, you know, the city, we're here, we're agreeing that we're not going to protest their permits and applications at the state level. But of course, we still have the ability to comment. You know, as long as Extraction is in compliance, you know, we're not going to be making opposition to applications they would be seeking from the state. So that's CDPHE, COGCC, et cetera. And Article 10 is really to accommodate the development schedule, or about the development schedule. It says that no drilling can commence later than December 31, 2024, subject to any force majeure, which would give them some sort of tolling period to allow some drilling beyond that. But we really tried to minimize that. The goal there was The goal there was really to make sure that they get in and get out in as quick a way as possible so that these sites can get to the production phase so that development can occur around those locations. And the, the drilling process, the fracking process doesn't, you know, the goal is to not let that forestall development, other commercial development that we want to see in the city as well. Article 12 required a $3 million bond in the event of a bankruptcy or financial setback of the operator. This was really limited simply to, there's, there's a lot of public comment and concern about the financial health and wellbeing of extraction as a company. And this clause basically says, if they were to go belly up, you know, we have this immediate access to $3 million that we can go and secure sites, bring in another operator to make sure things are, are in order and make sure there's no immediate risk to public health, welfare, safety and the environment. Article 13 addressed the city's inspection authorities. We can go out to sites and do inspections when we think it's appropriate. But it also establishes fees for inspections so that we get money back from extraction for those inspections. And I believe the way the, the early draft was, it also addressed, you know, a per well, per year air quality monitoring from the operator. That eventually morphed into what is now Exhibit H in the document, in the ROA, which has more extensive upfront fees for baseline sampling and then fees during the sampling, drilling and completion phase. They're really, because this is difficult process and requires money upfront to have a contractor come in and do this stuff. So the, the process changed to really allow the city to be able to get on, on the, on the right foot as that moves forward. Article 14 addressed enforcement and allows for an opportunity for a review and a hearing before the community development director. And of course, the development director, the community development director also has his discretion to determine what is practicable under the contract, where that term is used, which is not a lot of places in the end. It was more extensive and we were able to limit that as the, as things went on. Article 15 addresses potential successors and how they are bound to the regional operating agreement, the BMPs. It addresses force majeure. And it also contains other basic boilerplate contract language and contract terms that you'll see in just about any contract out there. Again, Article C addressed the insurance requirements. It's worth noting that, you know, the excess insurance requirement, the liability for, for general liability requires excess of $100 million in insurance. So that's we, per occurrence. So if there were to be some sort of catastrophic event, you know, the extraction has the insurance in place to address that issue. Exhibit D addressed the plugs that would, or excuse me, addressed the wells that would be plugged and abandoned. Some of those, a small number of those are actually in city, in the city right now. And then the large majority of those are in the city's growth area. So as we annex additional areas, those wells would then be plugged and abandoned by extraction at that time. Exhibit F basically is more about the scheduling. It anticipated the first wells would be drilled in 2021. And basically the, the drilling rig would move from pad to pad approximately every six months until the final drilling would start commence in the third quarter of 2024. The idea here was that two pads would not be being drilled at the same time. The final, or not the final, but Exhibit G outlines the, the, what was going to be provided to our emergency response, in terms of emergency response equipment and training. Basically, it's what's going to the fire districts. That was a, a water tender truck, a foam trailer, some additional training, things of that nature. Let's see, in response to that, that public comment period and further direction from council, that's where we had the air, the change to the air quality monitoring that was reflected in Exhibit H. The Harlow and Jacobson pads, Jacobson has now been referred to as anteater. But one of those pads would be eliminated. Of course, extraction has submitted applications for both, but ultimately only one can be approved during, based on the terms of the ROA. With regard to the Condor location, as submitted, it is, the location has actually appeared in the slideshow earlier on the Form 2A slide, I believe it was, that explained what a Form 2A was, where you saw the well pad sitting right underneath a water facility. That water facility is in Commerce City, was actually owned by Aurora. And that is over in High Tower Ranch, High Tower Ranch area, right along U470. There's been discussion to move that further east away, not only from the highway, but just the location wouldn't even be seen from the highway. And extraction, as far as we know, is still in conversations with the owner of that property to do that. And that would reduce any potential conflict with some planned residential in the High Tower Ranch area. One of the other changes that, that occurred after the comment period was the requirement for, that was, excuse me. In regard to produced water pipelines, the requirement was removed for sites except for Harlow and Jacobson and Heron, and Hereon, Heron, excuse me, which would mean that there's going to be a traffic increase from produced water trucks coming out of those. That of course is counterbalanced by the fact that we did an impact fee that basically means there's a higher impact fee that they pay if they are trucking water to those sites. So that would, is there to address the potential damage to roadways and infrastructure from that. So that's addressed through the process as well. And that's basically the overview of the regional operator agreement. I think this is going to go back over to Dominic now. A lot of information coming quickly. Keep going.
So I'll be going over the land development code. So our current code overview is, our current process is administrative review of an oil and gas permit with the appeal going directly to state court. So if the administrative approval of an oil and gas permit is appealed, it would go to, directly to state court. Currently, it's allowed in all standard zone districts except for a planned unit development where it's not explicitly called out in the allowed uses with an oil and gas permit. It must meet all the use requirements contained within LDC Section 215266. And the majority of the regulations focus on surface use impacts. As I mentioned prior, the all operators are required to sign an extraction agreement with the city prior to approval of an oil and gas permit. And then the regional operator agreement is an optional step to establish broad operation standards. The city has not regulated to the full authority granted under Senate Bill 181 at this time in terms of the base code regulations. Regarding ordinance 2235, this was the majority or the, the significant overhaul of the city's regulations. This ordinance was continued indefinitely by council on November 4th. There were some general issues that were raised at the public hearing coming from Oakwood Homes and the Callard Association, Callard Association of Home Builders. There were some concerns regarding the reverse setback provision and clarification on how a specific setback is measured. And generally with all of these, the stakeholder groups, the city is working in early January to establish common ground and address the majority of those issues prior to bringing this ordinance back to council. COGA extraction and API did have some concerns regarding the disclosure proprietary chemical information, the timeline to complete wells, the abandonment of gathering lines, gathering lines and among a number of other issues. And then there were other interested parties as well. Coming into play with this as well is Adams County. So as I mentioned previously, Adams County was the first local government to adopt new oil and gas regulations, which occurred in September. They generally limited oil and gas development from residential land use zones and increased the minimum setback from new oil and gas development to 1,000 feet from planted residential lot. We did hold a number of study sessions with city council and the, the general consensus was to be in line with Adams County's regulations as it made sense. As it pertains to Commerce City, there may have been circumstances where it made more sense to go higher and then other circumstances where the level of protections may not be as significant. But generally speaking, the thousand-foot setback ended up being a baseline for the regulations that Commerce City brought forth. And we're not going to get in depth on the specific changes that were recommended as part of the code updates. We're also going to be scheduling a study session with you all during the second week of February after staff has had an opportunity to meet with all interested stakeholder parties and resolve a number of the issues as well as a number of other stakeholders that have been addressed. So we're not going to go in depth on the background of that and we're going to be giving a more significant background and overview of what the proposed changes were. But just generally speaking, the objectives of the city's code update that we've discussed as a necessity were utilizing the authority to zone oil and gas through applicable zone districts and setbacks, establishing some form of reverse setback from existing or plugged and abandoned well sites, incorporating other powers granted to local governments through Senate Bill 181, including stricter force provisions and fees for ongoing air quality monitoring inspections, defining approval criteria for an alternative site location analysis. There's currently a requirement for such in the code, but the specifics are not defined. The process and approval evaluation, establishing an effective process for permitting oil and gas permits. And then incentivizing clear, defensible, fair and preferred site locations and/or high level of BMPs through expedited process. So how that happened in the original proposed code updates was essentially a, a specific type of process where you have administrative approval for oil and gas sites that are significantly farther away from residential and have reduced impacts versus sites that are closer to residential and may have more negative externalities associated, which would require a public hearing. So looking at process and looking how oil and gas permits are reviewed and assessing and figuring out if there's a way to incentivize development that is less impactful. One of the other tasks that we were given as part of the code update was to incorporate the feedback that was received during the focus group meetings, evaluating the additional feedback provided by the public, the industry and other regulatory agencies, evaluating financial assurances and fees, and then codification of the best management practices. So this is the real meat and potatoes. This is how things occur on site, what are the specific requirements, what are the maximum noise levels, all of the specific details as it applies to the surface location. So the way that this was brought forward was applied as a mandatory permit condition for all sites, updated annually to allow for changes as technologies increase over time. So the best management practices were supposed to live outside of the actual code. And then generally to incorporate other meaningful health, safety and general welfare protections. So given all of that information that we just gave to you in the last hour, what, what can we expect in 2020? So why, why are we giving this presentation? What do you, as a council, what are you going to be looking towards in 2020? So the first two weeks of January, as I mentioned, we're going to be holding stakeholder feeding meetings with the following entities, which include the Home Builders Association of Metro Denver and Oakwood Homes, Tri-County Health and CDPHE, COGA API and other operators, the Oil and Gas Focus Group, community groups and HOAs, as well as the COGCC. And as I mentioned at the last monthly update, if there's additional groups that council feels that we should be reaching out to, please let us know. We are more than happy to schedule those stakeholder meetings to make sure that the ordinance that comes before council is inclusive of all the comments that need to be included. So that being said, there's an anticipated date of March 2nd or April 6th for revised updates to be presented to council. When you do get into the specifics of the, the items that were brought up during concern as part of the ordinance that went on November 4th, it's, the majority of the heavy lifting on the regulation drafting has been done. We're getting more into specific minute details at this point, but the details do matter. In April, as I mentioned previously in the presentation, the COGCC is going to be doing a combined rulemaking on site location analysis, cumulative impacts of mission change. This is probably the most significant rulemaking that the COGCC is going to do in response to Senate Bill 181. If you want to get more details about what to expect in that, please take a look at the white paper that was provided in the packet. There are some substantive changes that we can expect from that. We don't know exactly how it's going to go. We have been in contact with COGCC staff to essentially say, where do you expect this to go? What do you see happening? How does this play into our oil and gas LDC updates process? And we're meeting and consulting with the COGCC to make sure that our regulations align with where the state is eventually going to go. And it, and for the time being, it seems like we're, we're aligned, but that process will become more defined more towards the end of, or towards quarter two. So another significant effort that the city is going to be taking during 2020 is the oil and gas permit review process. So not only including the administrative review of eight oil and gas permits with the eventual seven being eligible to be approved, council is going to, in some form or fashion, have to approve some sort of action for each of these facilities, whether it's a conditional use permit, which would apply to two of the facilities which are located in the reunion PUD. And then all other facilities in the city are within some sort of planned unit development that don't specifically classify oil and gas as an allowed use. So city council will be voting on the, either the zoning or the conditional use permit for each one of these sites, which is a precursor to staff approving the, the individual administrative oil and gas permit. This also applies to conditional use permit application for a pipeline. So we're expecting two conditional use permits for the pipelines that would serve each one of these sites, which is a requirement for, as part of the regional operator agreement. The Phase 1 pipeline would be composed, or connecting the five proposed locations along E470, which would include oil, gas and produced water. The, and just to clarify, the produced water would not apply to the sites that are excluded from that in the regional operator agreement. That would apply to the Phase 2 pipeline. So they're going to, the conditional use permit is going to be broken up in phases and council will be voting on that twice. And then, as I mentioned, there's the administrative oil and gas permit review. And then one other effort to be aware of is that there is going to be an RFQ slash an RFP process for an approved air quality monitoring master services agreement. As Matt Hader mentioned, the city received significant funds for ongoing air quality monitoring. And this will be contracted through a third party to conduct the air quality monitoring as well for the eventual code update when we get to a point where there are air quality monitoring requirements, establishing what's called an approved vendor list that would establish a requirement for operators to use a list of approved air quality vendors to essentially make sure that there's a standard for the, the type of air quality monitoring that's occurring in the city. And one of the major components that we're exploring as part of this is a significant and robust citizen data portal to make sure that members of the public are able to go on a website and be able to look at what, to the greatest extent possible, this is being flushed out during rulemaking, but real-time air quality data as it, as it pertains to your own gas sites. That being said, that was a lot of information, but myself, Matt Hader and Matt Surer are available to answer any questions that you may have about the process generally and what to expect.
Thank you to everybody that spoke during that presentation, provided that information. First up, Councilwoman Noble.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the information that you included. The numerous attachments were very helpful. I'd like to ask my fellow council members if, we received a confidential memo yesterday, there were two confidential memos and then five attachments. Were you all able to open your five attachments?
Yes, it was.
I was not able to open my five attachments and we tried a couple of times, so I'm not sure what's in them. But I will proceed. Could we go to Slide 24, please? So this is Senate Bill 19181. I would like to note that it seems to be a fairly narrow focus or a narrow interpretation. I'm going to read from Senate Bill 1981. "Regulating the surface, surface impacts of oil and gas operations in a reasonable manner", which is basically your first line. What's missing is the rest of the sentence that is the intent of 19181. "To address matters specified in this subsection and minimize adverse impacts to public health, safety and welfare and the environment." "If we can't stipulate that we all have the same understanding of the intent of Senate Bill 19181, then it seems difficult to move forward together in making decisions regarding, regarding these measures." Do you look quizzical?
Ms. Noble, are you asking a question?
Yes, can we all agree that that is the actual full sentence from SB 19181? This is for local authority. This is for local authority. "Regulating the surface impacts of oil and gas operations in a reasonable manner to address matters specified in this subsection and to protect and minimize adverse impacts to public health, safety, and welfare." To omit "minimize adverse impacts of public health, safety, and welfare and the environment" goes to the very heart of why 181 was passed. And if we don't all agree on the intention of that legislation, then we may not be all headed in the same direction.
I think I would probably be the best suited to respond to that statement and question. As to whether the council would all agree as to the intent and then the scope of the direction of the future regulations that Commerce City chooses to take is the policy question that will be before the city council and has been before the city council for some time. As to the scope of the legislation, I would wholeheartedly agree that, taken as a whole, and the preceding sentences and all the sentences that follow it within Section 4 of 181, do greatly expand the power of local governments to address public health, safety, and welfare with respect to oil and gas facilities. I would note that the phrase "minimize adverse impacts" is also itself a defined term later on in the statute, and then Section 1H of that provision includes a number of items that were not specifically listed here but were previously identified in the April 8th study session as topics that could be addressed should a local government choose to exercise its authority under 181. And so I just want to note that 181 talks about the authority of a local government but not a mandate. And so I think taking all of those things into account is the framework, but the fundamental purpose of which I think is noted here is the local regulation of well pad locations and the modification of state preemption. Certainly, and I think no person here would disagree, that that authority and then its focus on public health, safety, and welfare is the express intent of this legislation.
This legislation was signed into law in April. And again, I will reiterate, public health, safety, welfare, and the environment are critical elements. Further, local government cannot have any regulations that are less than the floor of the COGCC. You would have to be above the floor of the COGCC. So you don't have carte blanche, we don't have carte blanche, when it comes to determining regulations. As for the major highlights of the bill, those include land use, the location and siting of oil and gas facilities and oil and gas locations, impacts to public facilities and services, water quality and source, noise, vibration, odor, light, dust, air emissions and air quality, land disturbance, reclamation procedures, cultural resources, emergency preparedness, and coordination with first responders, security, and traffic and transportation impacts. We could define that as cumulative impact, and given that the state is not going to be looking at cumulative impact and mission change until April of this year, that is something significant that we need to take into account as well. In addition, you note here that it can impose fees, but as well, financial securities, indemnifications, and insurance as appropriate, as well as fines for leaks, spills, and emissions. Those are all very critical as well. Now going to Slide 25. The COGCC Director's Objective Criteria. The very first one says, sites within 2,000 feet of a building unit. The Director's Criteria actually reads, within 1,500 feet of a building unit, so that needs to be corrected.
I'd like to point out that following the CDPHE study that occurred in October, there was specific direction that occurred as part of that, that study and the public response, that they eventually did increase that to 2,000 feet. That is my understanding after having conversations with COGCC staff.
Okay, I just took this off the COGCC item, under Director's Criteria tonight. In addition, that distance is measured from the edge of a disturbed location as opposed to the building itself, so that's really important as well. And then Slide 40.
Before we do move on, one thing I would point out, as you pointed out, the COGCC has not issued rules and will not until April. So our purpose here has all along, excuse me, been to basically address all of those criteria, pardon me, that you mentioned at the beginning. And so in the absence of new rules from COGCC, there are no rules except what exists currently. And so the purpose of the ROA was to set a minimum threshold as best we could, and the purposes of the proposed LDC amendments, again, is to set a minimum threshold. And so, and that's a protection for the community, because if none of those things occurred, you'd be stuck with the current regulations that are in existence. So the purpose has been to try to raise the threshold to protect the community. And once the COGCC has issued their new rules, then I think it's certainly appropriate for the city to amend its rules as well, to come into compliance in alignment with those new rules at that time. So I want to make sure that we have that context, that we're trying to raise the threshold to protect the community in the absence of these new rules that don't exist yet. We think that they will, you know, bring them out in April, but again, there's no guarantee of that. So I just want to make sure that context is noted for everyone.
The Director's Criteria is used so that the Director may flag certain applications that are within a particular, where the site is within a particular distance of the building units, high occupancy buildings, which include urban mitigation areas and large UMA facilities. So the Director's Criteria actually dovetails with your ROA in a sense, because your ROA does not have a setback of feet from, I don't know, what is a setback? Do you know the setback, Mr. Martinelli?
There's not a minimum setback requirement specified within the ROA. There are, the majority of the sites are within a significant distance of residential save the two Harlow-Jacobson sites on the west. There's not a specific setback requirement. And the draft regulations that were proposed on November 4th, 2019, there was a minimum setback of 1,000 feet from residential, among others.
So the Director's Criteria, can you be used to flag those sites and ensure the most possible public health, safety, and welfare protection for our residents and our constituents, which is very critical? Then I'd like to turn to Slide 40, we are on Slide 40. I have a question about the, that the agreement may be terminated by either party with six months' notice, so that's Article 2. However, the other half of Article 2 that isn't on the screen is, shall remain, so even if this is terminated, even if Article 2 is terminated, whether it's six months or, within the six months, it shall survive and remain enforceable against the city or operator with respect to any facilities received and deemed complete by the city prior to termination. So the question of deemed complete versus the six months, in theory, can we cancel an agreement with an operator at five months and there be no repercussions?
Councilwoman Noble, I believe that's the sort of question as to the impact of the ROA and the potential liabilities to the city that I would recommend occur during an executive session.
Right. And deemed complete means to me, and usually when it comes to developer projects, that once the application is received and deemed complete, then the regulations that were in force, or the land development code that was in force at that time, or the ROA that was in force at that time, travels with that application. And any further regulations we might add would not apply to the applications that are deemed complete.
Deemed complete, I believe, is a defined term in the operator agreement. It essentially puts into the contract a concept that exists at law, whether or not the ROA exists anyway, that if a permit were submitted, most likely the law in effect at the time the regulations in effect would apply at the time that that application is submitted. So deemed complete in effect makes that the common understanding between this applicant and the city to avoid a dispute over that, and it can be viewed in multiple ways, one being that the city has an opportunity to actually determine that the permit application itself is complete, such that an incomplete application would not automatically grant that effect that law would provide. And then it's also important to note that the operator agreement and the law that it's enacted pursuant to, the land development code, does not vest rights itself, and so that shouldn't be viewed as vesting rights, it simply captures a legal concept that exists independent of the operator agreement. And I think Mr. Hader may have.
That may be true of any other application. If someone were to come in and, you know, I'm trying to get some random, you know, permit that someone might file for, I don't know, whether it's maybe a PUD change, you know, if the rules are there and they submit their application, they meet the rules, and they have a complete application, that's the criteria that their application will be, that will be applied to their application. We can't keep changing the law after they submit an application and have a constant moving target, the law doesn't allow that.
That makes sense. So what we're looking at then are seven applications from extraction oil and gas that were submitted between October 8th and early November, and all of those have now been deemed complete, which means that the regulations that are in place at this time are the regulations that apply to that application. So the higher standards that were offered by SB 181, which were not necessarily incorporated into the ROA because the negotiation began so far in advance of 181, we have what is for those seven sites at this time, correct?
That's correct, and that's in line with the direction that staff has received from council throughout this process.
Okay, so any higher standards for public health, safety, and welfare that were going to be, that were introduced on November 4th to the previous council would not have applied to the seven applications that had already been received and had been deemed complete, correct?
That would most likely be the case. I'll answer it fairly broadly, but I think your point is made.
Thank you very much. I have other questions too, but I'll leave it to my colleagues.
Thank you. Councilwoman Allen Thomas.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for presenting tonight. One concern or question, well, I have a couple of questions, but one question, since Commerce City is in Adams County, I'm aware that Adams County at one time had a 500-feet setback, and it was recently changed, and we need to be in unison, I think, with Adams County. But do you know what they, what the county just passed their setback to for residential homes, and how does ours compare to what we are proposing for Commerce City?
I'd be happy to answer that question. So the regulations that were currently passed by Adams County in September, and our law within unincorporated areas of Adams County requires a 1,000-foot setback from existing residential units as well as existing platted subdivisions. So if they, an application or a developer has applied for residential lots, and that's been approved through a formal planning process, there's also a setback from those. The land development code draft that was proposed on November 4th was generally in line with those regulations requiring a minimum setback of 1,000 feet from existing residential and platted residential as well.
Thank you. And then another question, you know, being concerned for all the residents and employees in Commerce City, in the slides, unless I missed presentations about that, but can you, do you guys know, like, in the studies or anything, have any of these pipelines ever exploded? And then is there plans in place, like, for the residents in Commerce City if anything like this occurs, or anything like evacuation procedures, or wildlife, that type of thing as well?
So I'm going to answer the first part of that question, and then I believe I'm also going to have Matt Serra come up and answer some more technical questions about the history of pipelines and that thing. But I can generally speak to the requirements within the regional operator agreement, so there are a number of significant safety and emergency response plans and provisions that are required as part of the OA. So we haven't seen the applications for the conditional use permits, but there has been a significant amount of consultation with the South Adams County Fire District and Brighton Fire Protection District to incorporate emergency response. There's the additional fees that they're providing for foam trailers and the adequate amount of emergency response to respond if there was an emergency. There are also a number of significant plans and provisions that the applicant would be required to provide that not only talks about the safety provisions that they would have to incorporate onsite, but also for associated facilities such as pipelines.
Yeah, they're primarily those that, type of accidents that fall into that category can be fires, explosions, and blowouts, and they're exceedingly rare. There's over 54,000 active wells, and it happens approximately, you know, a handful of times every year. However, it does happen, and that's one of the reasons that we deal with that in the emergency response plan. There has been pipeline explosions that have occurred, again, very exceedingly rare. The primary cause of fires and explosions on well sites is lightning strikes.
And one other, one other small thing I want to add on top of that is, if you compare the risk of a pipeline explosion or something of that nature compared to the risks that occur onsite, if it was not a piped facility where they have to do additional transfers to trucks and all of that type of thing, onsite storage, the comparison of the two, there's significantly more risk to have a site that doesn't have a pipeline due to those types of issues that may occur onsite without that type of facility.
Yeah, fair point. And one of the issues is that gas pipelines come to every one of our homes, and these kind of gas pipelines also, you know, occasionally can be run into, you know, if somebody's digging in the wrong place. Pipelines are generally the safest way, the only way, to convey natural gas, both from oil and gas facilities to gathering stations and transmission lines, but also to our homes. And oil pipelines don't run the risk of exploding because they're just not that, the nature of the pipelines is that it's not susceptible to exploding that way.
Thank you, and then I have one last question, and I'll let the rest of the council speak. But you mentioned, Mr. Martinelli, that, like, when it's years down the road, when it closes, or I guess the well is what's referred to as plugged, are there any regulations right now statewide as to, like, how long after once the site is plugged before development can occur, and the safety issues, and again, the environment, et cetera, around that as well?
Yeah, so I can speak a little bit more towards that. As it relates to the plugging and abandoning of a number of the old legacy wells that occur, so this is something that fairly, that recent, or that frequently occurs along the front range as we're in this interface of continued suburban expansion where existing oil and gas well development occurred. There are a number of significant plugging and abandoning requirements at the state, there are a number of forms that they have to issue. There are a number of forms that they have to issue that show proper abandonment and closure of the wells. There's also significant reclamation requirements to restore the landscape surrounding the wells to the natural conditions that were in existence prior. Generally, and this was also included within our draft regulations on November 4th, is oftentimes there are municipal regulations regarding setbacks surrounding a plugged and abandoned well site of generally a distance of 50 feet to ensure that if there ever is the need to go back and fix a plugged and abandoned well, or do additional capping or something along those lines, that they're sufficient with to be able to do that. And those are often denoted on plats at the times of subdivision. So there are a number of regulations that exist for that interface to ensure that developers are able to come in and construct residential around former oil and gas development.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Noble?
I would like to go back to slide 23. And I just want to point out that on Form 2A, it also includes distances, setbacks, wildlife preserves, wetlands, floodways, et cetera. And it does behoove community members to look at the measurements. You can do so on the COGCC website. You may know of housing that has been constructed that doesn't show on the maps. The last map that the COGCC had on their site was 2017, and clearly Commerce City is one of the best examples of how much development can occur. So it's really important, actually, that folks who live here in Commerce City, especially in the North Range, who are going to be impacted by this, if it goes through, is that they double-check all of the data on the Form 2As. I want to go back to deemed complete again for just a minute. On October 21st, I appeared before the city council, as at that time I was a candidate for a city council, and I had observed in the presentation that there were two sites that had been approved, that, I'm sorry, that had been submitted, not approved, my apologies. These, it was critical to draw attention to them, I felt, for the neighborhoods that were going to be impacted. And this was Pelican and Condor, so it was Buffalo Highlands, South Lawn, Buckley Ranch, Frontera. And apparently later in that evening, when the staff gave their report, the slide then read "submitted and deemed complete." We already had the discussion earlier of the impact of deemed complete, that deemed complete means that only the current regulations apply to that, those applications. Then it turns out, at the next meeting in November, that there were actually several applications that had come in prior to the election, and had subsequently been deemed complete also, and had been deemed complete by October 21st, some after that point. I just am concerned that we keep standards in terms of transparency and public information the same all the way through. City staff had done a wonderful job on the oil and gas sites, on the two oil and gas sites, in keeping people updated, and I really appreciated that. When you change how you're doing it, and that you're withholding information, it may not be deliberate, but for some people, it might appear as if it was deliberate. So it's important that we keep the community as informed as possible, because these applications are now deemed complete, which makes them, in many senses, irreversible unless there is COGCC floor that will raise the standards on our behalf, on the behalf of our health, safety, and welfare.
I'm sorry, did you, was there a question as part of that statement, or was it just a statement?
It was a statement in terms of ensuring that going forward, we remain, that we stay transparent, current, so that we all know what's going on. As we saw from the slide, though, that shows where all of the wellbores are going to be along with the sites, there isn't a whole lot more that can be done in the North Range. So basically, the horse is out of the barn.
In response, I would say we understand and agree with your statement. I would also note that there are key discretionary approvals for every site that are still necessary before any actual permit could be approved.
And thank you, Councilwoman Noble. I believe you may just have misspoken, and this is not to detract from the point of your statement. I believe you said that more than the two applications had been deemed complete by October 21st. I believe only two applications had been deemed complete as of October 21st. Multiple applications had been received, which is possibly what you'd intended to say. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that, and then obviously, they were deemed complete shortly thereafter.
Could you read off those dates, please, of the deemed complete for all seven sites?
Yes, I'm reading from the city manager update from December 9th of this year. The Condor pad was submitted to the city on October 8th, and was deemed complete on October 17th. The Pelican pad was submitted to the city on October 8th and deemed complete on October 21st. The Owl pad was submitted to the city on October 17th and deemed complete on November 8th. And I'm just gonna ask for anybody that doesn't agree with this information, please let me know. I'm just reading from the city manager update. The Falcon pad was submitted on October 17th and deemed complete on November 8th. The Blue Jay pad was submitted on October 17th and deemed complete on November 8th. The Heron pad application was submitted on October 18th and deemed complete on November 4th. And the Harlow pad was submitted on October 21st and deemed complete on November 4th.
And I will reiterate, part of my point that may have been misconstrued is that the presentation on October 21st showed two sites, Pelican and Condor. The slide did not say that was given to the public. It did not say anything about deemed complete. So in theory, the community could have known that all of those sites had been submitted, except for the fact that there was a change made in reporting.
Yes, I was the person who made the presentation. Keep in mind that the presentation is uploaded into the system and distributed to council at a minimum by Thursday prior to the Monday council meeting. So 21st, go back to the prior Thursday, that's when the slides were uploaded. So what was given to me for presentation that night had been updated because one application was deemed complete on the 17th, and the second one was deemed complete on the 21st, so the day of the presentation. So we had a timing issue there. Subsequent to that, I've given instructions to the community development staff to always show where the applications are in the process. So if they've been submitted, but they're not deemed complete, or if they've been deemed complete, and so, so that we have that consistency going forward. So hopefully that addresses what you've raised and addresses your concern.
The fact that they were submitted is what was important. Whether they were deemed complete was less important, and it held up revealing that information to the community, and that's what's at issue in my mind.
Well, when they're not deemed complete, then there may be additional time where they, where the company has to submit additional information. So that's, that's why I think it is relevant, but again.
Your presentation that you put, that you released to the public on October 20, that you released to the public on Thursday prior to the meeting, did not say deemed complete. It did not say that. It just said submitted.
That's correct, because they weren't deemed complete at that point yet.
Exactly. So the reporting standard changed, and it shouldn't have changed in order for the public to be kept informed. That's what I'm concerned about, is that the reporting standard changed, which meant that the public was not made aware of all of the applications that had been submitted prior to November 5th. Thank you.
Councilwoman Grimes?
I'm not sure who would like to answer, but just if someone could give an explanation of how cultural distances are derived and certified, with cultural distances with regards to setbacks, how those are derived and also certified?
So you're talking about the Color and Gas Conservation Commission regulations? Color and Gas Conservation Commission regulations require from the actual production facility, so that can include a wellhead, a tank, tank battery, any of that permanent production facility, to the actual home itself, to the side of the home closest to that production facility. And that distance is something that is, comes from the operator, and the operator is getting that from probably the Color and Gas Conservation Commission. Whether it's certified or not, frankly, you know, there has been some debate at the Color and Gas Conservation Commission as to how to measure that, and frankly, the Color and Gas Conservation Commission is ultimately the arbitrator if that is something that comes into question.
I'm speaking specifically to land surveys that are done to identify those distances. They are certified distances, and they are provided by the operator. And so my comment is, in response to Ms. Noble's question about how up-to-date those distances are with regards to current mapping on the COGCC website, and my hope was that you would confirm.
Yeah, so.
Those distances are derived in real time by certified land surveyors, professional land surveyors.
That's right. It's, that's correct. However, again, if there's a dispute, it goes to the Color and Gas Conservation Commission, and that has happened only occasionally.
Sure, thank you. You may, I'm not sure, Matt, you may want to answer the next question I have as well. Could somebody speak to how wells are plugged, the mechanics and procedures of that?
That is a little outside of my expertise. However, I know that the Color and Gas Conservation Commission has extensive regulations as to how that plugging and abandonment occurs, and there is a requirement of cementing distance from any portable aquifers, as we mentioned before. You may know the specifics of that, and I could certainly get back to you with, you know, a description of what the Color and Gas Conservation Commission requires.
I'm certainly familiar with the procedures. I was hoping that we could get a presentation for council.
Happy, happy to make that happen.
Thank you. And one last question, I think probably for someone else. The transferability of permits piece of the LDC update, can we get some current information on where that stands now?
In terms of the drafting process?
The drafting process and what the language reads currently as far as, because I know there were changes made to the transferability piece of the, of the LDC.
I might ask, just a clarifying question. Current regulations regarding transferability, including what's in the ROA, or what's in the draft LDC amendment?
What is in the draft?
Pulling it up as we speak.
She's at least pulling up the draft right now. Does anybody know offhand what the answer to that is? Everybody's looking it up.
There's, my recollection is we did, there were some restrictions on transferability that was requiring city consent or approval, because partly to make sure that any transferee can meet all the obligations and requirements of the ROA and insurance requirements and things of that nature. And that is something that I think that we've been asked to revisit as well and take a look at that.
Yeah, and part of the, having that in the draft regulations and the intent behind it was to have additional staff review at the time of a transferability of a permit as to the reasons that Mr. Matt Hader stated. That is an issue that was brought up during the hearing, and we are working through that process as we engage our stakeholders to determine if there's an alternative solution to that that meets the demands of all parties.
Would you like me to read the language as was proposed? It's section 14 of section 213216 of Land Development Code. It's proposed that an oil and gas permit may be assigned to another operator with the written consent of the city upon the director, the community development director's reasonable determination that the new operator can and will comply with all requirements, terms and conditions of the code, the oil and gas permit, and any regional operator agreement, and all applicable state, local, and federal laws, rules, and regulations. I could explain that that was written a certain way because I wrote it that way, to mirror in some way the operator agreement, but primarily to mirror the same restriction that is contained in the city's requirements for a conditional use permit. We took the comments from that evening to heart and are intending to find a solution that would account for some of those concerns about transferability while accommodating the concern that the city wants to ensure that people that are acting in a highly regulated area have the capacity to comply with those. But that is certainly going to be an area of robust discussion and better drafting to meet everybody's needs.
And one more question. Just curious if we can get a little bit of an overview on how zoning plays into the entire permitting process, timing, and how it affects oil and gas permits, depending on the outcome of zoning cases.
I'd be happy to answer that question. So I'll answer that in the capacity of, as it relates to oil and gas permits. But generally speaking, a zoning application is an entitlement of the property that's required to be in place prior to the issuance of an oil and gas permit. So essentially saying that zoning is a regulatory tool that's used by local governments to regulate the types of uses and type of development that can occur on a specific single property. As part of our process, generally, a rezoning is generally taking anywhere between four to six months in terms of city process, so that requires not only review by the city's planning commission, but eventual approval by city council. The way that this normally works and the way that we're processing this is that a zoning application can run concurrently at the same time as an oil and gas permit. A lot of, and this comes from the process and how we review it under our general development review, so a lot of times we'll have a developer that wants to put in a restaurant on a site that's not currently zoned for eating establishments. So they'll submit a zoning application at the time of the, what's called, development plan. But the, the issue is, is that the development permit, in this case, the oil and gas permit, cannot be approved until city council renders a decision on the zoning. So as we talk about this, and that applies for what, not only the conditional use permit process that all of these sites would need to eventually, or for two of the sites that would need to gain, is that approval needs to come before staff can administratively approve an oil and gas permit, because we can't, we legally wouldn't be able to approve a permit for a site that doesn't have the entitlement to allow that.
Councilman Hurst?
Thank you for the presentation tonight, staff. I thought it was very informative to catch us all back up on where we're currently at. You know, one of the things I hear outside of environmental and health, potential problems that people have, and those are obvious, and I would, you know, I thought we provided some good background on what the ROA and the LDC are. the LDC are trying to do to provide safe setbacks and safe standards there. But one of the things I'd like to talk about and point out more, or discuss more for my, my sake and hopefully everybody else, is the $3 million bond requirement for bankruptcy or financial setback of operator. So that would be the first topic I would like to discuss. And the second one, which goes in line with that, is the umbrella excess liability and environmental liability insurance. I know we touched on a specific amount during the presentation, but unfortunately, in a, in a horrible event, if a horrible event happened, money is, it's necessary to rebuild, I guess, but it's not going to fix any problems if there's loss of life or injuries or anything like that. Those are, those are forever. But understanding what excess liability, environmental liability insurance, those aren't everyday terms that we deal with, because environmental liability does, does lie in other industries, obviously, but it's not your standard insurance conversation that we have. So understanding what environmental liability insurance actually protects, what it's used for, what events that, that triggers that need for it. And then the excess liability, I believe you said $100 million, that's what I wrote. That's quite a bit of money, which is fantastic. Like I said, obviously, if there was something horrible that happened, you would need quite a bit of money. But I would like to understand better, with those requirements, what are those requirements? What are those insurance triggers? And what do they do? Who would they be available for? Is that $100 million to protect the city? Or is that $100 million to protect our residents if something happened?
So, insurance requirements are addressed in Exhibit C of the ROA, and I think that's what you're referring to. So I think trying to, trying to break down your, your questions, I think maybe the, the place to start might be, what is excess insurance? Which basically is insurance for insurance, if that makes sense. You might have a policy that allows $25 million in, in coverage that comes out of, out of your pocket. So say, somebody sues an operator and they have a cap on their insurance of $25 million, and that person is awarded $50 million. So they pay the 25, then they say, well, we don't have another 25. That excess insurance policy kicks in at that point to cover that gap. So in this case, that would be, with, with this contract, that excess insurance is required to be up to $100 million per occurrence. So, that's going to address their liability that would be covered by insurance, which would mean, I would imagine, anybody that was, that would be suing them or seeking some sort of recovery from extraction, whether that would be the city, or private property owners, or anybody else that believes they've been damaged through some sort of accident or something that would have occurred.
So the per occurrence clause makes it so, I could have my own lawsuit, Councilwoman Grimes could have her own lawsuit, so on and so forth, and each occurrence would have to be covered up to $100 million?
The occurrence would, no. The, the occurrence itself would be the underlying event. You may both have claims related to the same event, and their cap would be the $100 million, it'd be, be shared between however many people were damaged.
Well, that's how I understood it, but I wanted to make it clear by asking that question, that that is not, that is how it is. It's not, you know, $900 million if all nine of us had individual claims against.
That, that is correct.
And the other, the other question was the $3 million bond required in event of bankruptcy or financial setback of operator. I think there is, it's a fluctuating market, obviously, so there's, there's reasonable concern on something like that. But have we done research, or is there research available to us that says $3 million covers the exit of a company? So basically, if they picked up, left and, and left the well as, as is, and it was now our problem to address, whether by bringing in a, we would obviously have to bring in a, a different operator to cap it or continue extracting, whatever the case may be. Is there reasonable information out there that $3 million bond coverage is good enough for us in that situation?
So, yeah, I have to dig back into the file to figure out, to recall the basis for that number. But it was, it was, at the time, based on our reasonable estimates of what resources would have to be mobilized to, to address that kind of emergent situation. So the thinking was, if something happens suddenly because of a bankruptcy, the operator cannot, is not going to operate, and suddenly all the workers at the site walk off the site, the site's not secure, there's no one performing any necessary function, safety, what would it take to mobilize somebody to contact another operator, have them sweep in with a team as quick as humanly possible, provide site security? And this was a number that was based on that, basically for that kind of short term, to address that short term gap that we would need immediate liquid funds for to address that. But it was, it was a number that was difficult to come up with.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, I wasn't addressing that it wasn't enough, because I, I honestly don't know that $3 million is enough or not enough, but I really did want to hear that we had a well-thought-out plan to get to that $3 million number, and it's not based off of 10-year-old data that, you know, this happened in a neighboring community and they had to spend $3 million to get it 10 years ago. Okay, well, 10 years ago, if it's 10 years ago, it'd be probably $6 million today if, if we're basing that number off of something that happened in the past. And so, again, if we can just assure that those numbers have a well-defined, well-thought-out process to get to that number where we feel comfortable, you know, addressing, you know, using that as the financial stability or financial backing of the ROA and the LDC, that's very important, I think, for all of us trying to, to wrap our heads around the what-ifs, because there's plenty of what-ifs out there. Again, my, my stance on it is finding the compromise that works better for both sides, because I don't think it has to be a 50-50 split in this. I think we can, you know, find reasonable, and again, going back to the reasonable, reasonable ways to set health and safety standards to these operations based off the BMPs. And so, you know, one of my concerns is the, the scariest what-ifs. I mean, there's some scary what-ifs, and, and are we appropriately addressing those scary what-ifs?
Was that a question? Thank you. Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, I would just like to make a statement, you know, and I think it's really important to remember that it's a matter that we continue to think of the residents and our environment and the safety of all of this situations that's going on right now. So I'm just hoping too that staff will work with the residents and continue to have like focus groups, informational sessions, just to keep the residents aware in the community of what's involved as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Noble? Microphone?
On Monday night, I was really pleased to see that we had unanimous support for including Syncor Refinery in our oil and gas monthly update. We have heavy oil and gas activity in the south end of Commerce City, and will be potentially faced with heavy oil and gas activity in the north end as well. It will determine Commerce City's future going forward. In the north end, there are around, I suppose, 30,000 residents or more, I think. And given the fact that the mission change and cumulative impacts, which are, as noted, two of the most major rulemakings to come, won't be until April. It seems that there should be some sort of pause before we move forward in terms of approving anything further. There are several places at which there is administrative approval that doesn't even come back to the city council and just is approved by the city manager. And it is, seems to be so consequential to me that council members should be accountable for this vote, and not put it on the head of the city manager. We live here, these are our neighbors. I'm just hoping that we can all come to terms on that. It doesn't seem like it would be that difficult to accomplish. And it's five months. The oil and gas isn't going anywhere. And I hope my fellow council members would agree.
Councilwoman Grimes?
With regards to a bankruptcy, there are more regulations in place in a bankruptcy than just the city's purview. Could somebody speak to the oversights of a bankruptcy court and court-appointed trustees regarding ongoing operations of an operator in that situation?
I'm going to say that that information is not available at this time. The specific manner in which a bankruptcy trustee or receiver would act, I assume we could look into. That might take a substantial amount of work. I would say that the protections in the ROA and whatever we've proposed in the Land Development Code, if there's anything in there for that sort of financial setback, are, in order to prevent the necessary delay that comes with any such action, such that by the time that somebody files a bankruptcy or receivership, by the time that word gets back to the city and any creditor involved person would be involved, significant time may lapse, and significant in this case may be pretty brief. And so, yes, there are, but I assume that there would be some oversight and obligations of, to protect property of the bankruptcy debtor in that case, which I think the point you're trying to make possibly is that there are additional protections beyond the city to preserve and protect those sites. That would work in conjunction with what the city's proposed.
Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, as Councilwoman Noble was talking about, you know, the, the timing of COGCC new rules coming out in April, there's also built into this process quite a bit of time. And there's be quite a bit of permits that have to be approved for all the pipeline and everything that we have to approve on us before any of this can move forward. I know there's been discussion of moratorium in the past and in other, in other places. And I've always been, since I've got on council, under the impression that we are in somewhat of a moratorium, because we have so many votes that must take place, so many public hearings that must take place before we can proceed any further with approving any site actually going into operation, that I think, thinking April is even feasible to get anything in front of us for a vote in terms of land use and special use permits. It's, I just don't think that's a feasible timeline for us to appropriately hear those cases, make votes, and, and start. So it is my feeling that actions taken by this council will happen after April anyways, and then discussions of timing and, and those types of things could happen then. I think there's quite a bit more work to be done before anything would get approved in the best-case scenario, i- is my opinion. And I could be completely wrong, and I'm, and I'm okay with anybody correcting me, but it seems to me that we still have quite a bit of work that will be in front of this council outside of just approval from a director at the city level. We are going to have to make more than one vote before anything can, can happen moving forward.
Councilwoman Noble?
See your point, Councilmember Hurst. And I would also like to point out that the, that SB 181 establishes a new floor for health, safety, and welfare when it comes to the public, the environment, and wildlife. So that floor may actually be higher than the standards in our, our away NBNP that isn't currently in place. That would potentially supersede the applications that had been deemed complete, but I don't know technically what the answer would be to that. But it seems important. I mean, they only just had the rulemaking regarding flow lines. They have a rulemaking coming up on wellhead integrity, and one of the applicants had $800,000 in fines over wellhead integrity issues. They hadn't checked the braid and heads. That's a significant fine in COGCC world. I think that there's things that a delay would actually benefit us on, because it is so incredibly important. Cumulative impact is the seven sites encircling the North Range community, and that will be determined in April. The exact mission language will be determined in April. And to shortcut this, when we have the opportunity to put the highest level of safety, health, and welfare in place, seems like something we need to do, and that would be, we would be negligent if we didn't do it, when we have the opportunity to do so.
All right, we're getting a little bit away from the purpose of being able to ask staff questions. I'm going to let Councilman Hurst respond if we are, no longer have any questions for staff after his statement, and we'll wrap up this meeting. Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, I, and I don't disagree with you, Councilwoman Noble, that, that there's potential for changes, but one thing I do want to point out is that those changes aren't being made in a bubble. I think our staff has been working closely with the COGCC to understand the direction they're going. They might not know the exact direction, but the delay for April's rulemaking i- is, as we're working towards April and we're learning the directions, we're attending the hearings, we're hearing, you know, the, the studies or the science that they're being considered, I, I just don't think it's being made in a bubble. I think everybody's tracking along with what's happening at COGCC and the direction that they're going. And as Dominic pointed out several times, that we are still, our LDC, our ROA is still in alignment with where they're going. We don't know that it's going to be in full compliance with it yet, and obviously, the rules haven't been signed yet. And so, that's why I say, you know, we're working at the same pace as they are. As they update us, we're trying to work on it. And, and I don't want that to stop by any means. And so, you know, because I, I just don't think we're working blindly on this. I think we're, we have a established relationship with the other agencies that are going to regulate oil and gas. And so to continue working with them as they're doing it, continue setting a standard to where we're going to meet those guidelines by COGCC for obvious reasons, I, I think is reasonable, moving forward without having to put, slam the brakes on anything. I, I think Dominic and everybody who's working with the COGCC should continue to do so and continue to try to align the rules that are be in our LDC with what COGCC has at least the baseline for it. And so, I think the compromise there is that we continue working down the path with those relationships and, and are prepared, if, let's just say, April 15th, they come out with the rules, we pretty much should know 80% of what's going to be written that day, and we can make adjustments as necessary. And so, that's kind of my spiel against, you know, putting a hold on everything, because really, we're not asking, we're just asking. really we're not asking, we're just asking to make sure that we're up to date, staying up to date with COGCC, their standards, what they're talking about, and that we're meeting that standard or that expectation the entire time.
Thank you, Councilman Hearst. Are there any other questions for staff? Councilwoman Noble?
On, in September of 2019, you had stakeholder meetings with Regulatory Industry and Adams County representatives. And in keeping with the intent of SB 181, I would hope that any stakeholder meetings in the future include groups that are focused on health and safety first. The same thing would apply on any of the stakeholder meetings that you have upcoming on the new regulations, so that all voices are being heard, not just those associated with the industry.
I do believe that was addressed by a council vote on the evening of November 18th, that we would include those organizations to be part of the group. Thank you for that input. Any other questions for staff? Before we wrap this portion up, Mr. Shiesley, would you mind explaining to those that are present why it is that this has not been opened up for citizen communication or questions from our residents?
Yes, sir. The city council's policies provide that public comment is not provided during study sessions or special meetings unless it's specifically listed on the agenda, because this special meeting was intended as educational and background for the newly seated council. I personally ask that the agenda include a statement to reflect that rule so that people didn't show up with an expectation that was not then met. Should council want to call a special meeting with public comment purpose, that would need to be stated at the time. Otherwise, the citizen communication period is required and provided at every city council regular meeting on the first and third Mondays of every month, or at any public hearing or where an action could be taken.
Thank you. Can you add what the process would be if council members wanted to change that council policy?
Yes, at a night, that would not be tonight, because it would not be the purpose of the special meeting. Council would simply request a, a policy change, which would be very easy to accomplish. It could be a motion to direct me to put that on a future agenda for consideration. We could also discuss it at one of the early study sessions in January.
Thank you. One other thing we need to address before we convene, before we adjourn, is there were two letters that were sent to the council members regarding RTD. One is coming out of the NADA and the other is coming out of the AdCog Transportation Forum. Those were sent to you for comment or to oppose if you did not want the city to sign on to those letters. Is there any objection to the city supporting those two letters? Seeing none, then direction will be given to the representative to proceed with supporting those letters. All right, that is the extent of this evening's evening. That is the, yes, Mr. Attorney?
Just to note, in case anybody's curious, why we could act on that and it's not on the agenda, there wasn't really acting, but the three council members who are absent consented to that, and no one here objected to addressing that matter, and the charter allows for that as a procedure in a special meeting.
Thank you. All right, there being no other business, coming before the city of Commerce City, we are adjourned.